Seven o'clock, County Commission meeting will now come to order. Before I call on Mr. Johnson to lead us in prayer, I want to introduce scouts that are here tonight. Nathan McQuay, Troop 348, Communications Merritt Badges working on. Gene Braheeny, Assistant Scout Master, Troop 171. Kyle Braheeny and Colin Braheeny. And they'll be leading us later on in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I also want to give you an update on Mr. Williams because I did stop to see him before I came. He was sitting up and he was talking and doing very well. And he had been walking the floor today, so it was good news. And we hope that he'll continue with his progress. And his wife said if you'll continue to keep them in your prayers, she would appreciate it. This time I'm going to call Mr. Johnson to give us an indication.
Let's pray, please. Father, first of all, we just offer you praise for the good report that Mr. Norman has just given us on our friend Godfrey Williams. Father, indeed, that is a miracle in itself. And Father, we continue to ask you in Jesus' name for further miracles in his life, that you would restore him to health, that he'd come back and would again enjoy his leadership and his fellowship. We thank you for him, Lord. And we just pray your hand would be upon Patsy and all of his children, that you would comfort them, Lord, and give them strength through this ordeal. We thank you so much for the opportunity we have to serve you tonight and to serve the folks in this county. We ask, Father, in advance, that you would forgive us when we err, that you would point it out to us, that we will repent of it, and that we would serve the folks of this county wisely and justly, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Now, call on Troop 171 who leads in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop 171. We do appreciate you being here, and that's Williamson, Williamson Chapel Church, Methodist Church at that. But we thank you for being here tonight, today. This time I'll call on Ms. Mashman about adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have only one adjustment to the agenda, and that is an addition. This will be item K under Administrative Matters. And this was forwarded to you last Friday, I think, by our Planning Director, Ron Smith. It has to do with erosion and sedimentation control expansion. And you also have a copy of it placed before you this evening. And Mr. Smith will explain further why we're bringing that forward to you tonight. But, Mr. Chairman, that is the only addition that I have, erosion control program expansion resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Mashman. Do we have any additional additions to the agenda? Any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we adopt this agenda as with the amendments presented by Mr. Mashman.
Okay. All in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Public hearing tonight, I'll call on Mr. Garrison.
Good evening. The purpose of this public hearing tonight is to allow citizen input related to our Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act grant application. The other action that would be required would be that the board adopt a resolution that would allow me, as the Director of Transportation for the county, to submit the application to the NCDOT. Just a quick overview, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act has $100 million allocated for transit in North Carolina. Seventy million of that is set aside for urban, and the urbans apply directly with the federal transit administration for those funds. There's approximately $30 million that are set aside for rural or non-urban transit systems. The NCDOT applies with the federal transit administration for those funds. They become the recipient, and then they award the funds, and the persons receiving the funds will become a sub-recipient. The application was due on May the 1st, and I did submit the application. It is submitted as incomplete because of the lacking of the public hearing. These projects are 100% capital and require no local match, and there's no operating funds that are tied to these projects. The timeline for this is April the 21st, we called for a public hearing. On April 26th, I published a public hearing notice in the local newspaper in both English and in Spanish to meet the requirements. On May 1st, the application was submitted. On May the 1st through the 18th, the NCDOT will review these applications. And on May 22nd, they will come out with their funding recommendations, and they would notify us of possible funding recommendations. On June the 4th, the recommendations are submitted to the North Carolina Board of Transportation, and if approved at that point on June the 18th, they would send out agreements to the persons awarded, and we would sign those agreements, which would start the project. They anticipate the effective date for the project would be August 1st of this year. I also want to thank Steve Warren with Iredale County Planning Department. Steve worked with me and provided some assistance in reviewing this grant, and there are some things in this grant that are not typical of the normal grants that we submit to the DOT, so I want to thank Steve for his assistance. And Steve's also agreed to work with me when, if we are approved for funding and we get those agreements, to help me review those agreements, to make sure what we're signing off on before we turn them in. Just quickly, what we're asking for in these grants are eight replacement vans. Four of these vans are actually in our Community Transportation Program application that was recently submitted. And then there are four other vans that now meet the eligible mileage for replacement. We're also looking at lettering and logos for these vehicles. We're looking at some facility improvement in projects. What we'd like to do is add replacement windows to our facility and vinyl siding, and also put video surveillance in our parking area. We're also asking for advanced technology. What we'd like to do is add the automatic vehicle locators and mobile data computers to seven vehicles in our fleet, which would bring it up to our entire fleet being covered. And then we're asking for vehicle preventative maintenance for 22 months. The total of this would be, if all of this was approved, it would be $549,963. Over the next two years, these vehicles that are in this application would be replaced by the NCDOT anyway. By putting them in this grant, it would save us the 10% local match on those vehicles. The preventative maintenance, if that were approved, it would save us approximately $80,000 over a 22-month period, which would be also additional dollars in our budget. And then the other items that I've listed, we currently do not have a plan for replacement. So with this, I have, after I have published the hearing notice, no one has contacted me to ask questions or to speak at this hearing, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions from board members?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you.
At this time, is a chance, if you would like to speak in favor or against this request, this is your opportunity to do so. You can also just come to the mic and tell us who you are. If no one wishing to speak, then we will close this public hearing and our entertaining motion to accept the recommendation, Mr. Garrison.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the request is accept his recommendation and adopt the resolution. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I would offer the motion that we accept his recommendation and approve the resolution as he's presented it.
Any questions regarding the motion? No questions, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Thank you, Mr. Garrison. We will now move on to Administrative Matters, Mr. Mashman.
Mr. Chairman, the first item has to do with approval of some documents pertaining to rights-of-way for the Rocky River School in Mooresville, and Mr. Pope is going to be handling the presentation of that.
Mr. Chairman, you will recall that some time ago, when we started financing school construction, at least in part with COPS documents, it was necessary for the county to own the real estate on which the schools were located, that is, the schools that were being financed or were being improved with that kind of financing. Mooresville transferred to Iredale County, titled to a tract of land out on, I believe it was called Rocky Creek Road or Rocky River Road, something like that. And we financed the school facility, we're using COPS with a part of that land. The county technically owns title to all of that land. If we had not financed the schools in that way, if we financed them in a traditional way, this property would still be owned by the Mooresville Grade School System, and this issue wouldn't be before you. The issue is how to get access to the school, improved access. The Mooresville school folks started talking to the DOT about a year ago and exploring the various options for getting access, and determined that the easiest and the cheapest way to do that was to do a road widening. But to do that, it was going to affect two or three lots of an adjoining property owner. And in order to avoid condemnation and the expense and so forth associated with that, they began to negotiate with that owner, and they have reached an agreement. Under the agreement, the Mooresville folks would get a site easement, which they believe would enhance the safety of the road and access to the school. And they would get a right-of-way for widening of the road. They would give up two sewer easements and a sign easement, a spot to put a sign to advertise the subdivision. They have determined that this is a very cost-efficient way, and that it's, what they describe as a win-win. It's a win for them, and it's a win for the adjoining property owner. And they have unanimously approved this plan and urged you to adopt it, which you're required to do since you're technically the title holder of this land. I have examined these documents, and I think there might be a word or two that need to be tweaked, but in substance and concept, I think they're acceptable, and I recommend to you that you adopt the documents, at least from a legal perspective. I don't see any downside. It looks to me like something that would help the school system accomplish their mission, and at the same time, not cost much money to do so.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Pope, anyone?
If you do make a motion to approve it, I would also authorize the chairman to make any changes that would not be, as a result of, you know, as he indicated, tweaking some of the wording in it, so that it doesn't have to come back to you for something that's not a substantive change.
Okay. Anyone have a question?
So the construction easement is temporary, Mr. Pope, and when the construction of the sewer line is complete, that easement becomes null and void. Is that right?
No. No, there are two easements, a temporary easement for the construction period, and then a permanent easement for the sewer line would actually be in there on a permanent basis.
Well, I understand that, but the part of the property that we're talking about, that easement goes away, and then they still have the easement for the sewer line? Is that what we're talking about?
That's right.
Okay.
Any additional questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, with the amendments that Mr. Pope sees fit.
Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, item B is a matter that Commissioner Caddell asked to be placed on the agenda this evening for further discussion of the March 17, 2009 minutes.
Mr. Caddell.
I wasn't here when we reviewed the minutes last time, and so I read them, and I felt that they didn't completely reflect what happened, in that the minutes suggested that we voted on a motion to not adopt the health board fee and also instruct the health board not to perform the septic inspections. I went to the tape that's on the internet, and what I found was at 51 minutes and 26 seconds, Commissioner Norman made a motion to reject the fee. About that time, Commissioner Robertson brought the subject up with him and asked him to kind of change it to mean we're not going to do the, or ask him, I think, he asked him if he was, if he meant that we're not going to do the inspections as well. And Commissioner Norman agreed to that. There was some discussion, and subsequent to that, at 54 minutes and 16 seconds, about three minutes later, the chairman restated the motion, and he stated the motion simply as, "We will not approve the fee," and left anything out to do with the inspections. That's the only thing that I heard when I voted, was what the chairman said, and that's the motion that I voted on. And I think the confusion happened in that your motion could perhaps have been to not have the fee and also not do the inspections. But I just didn't hear the conversation between you and Mr. Robertson. And so when I finally heard it restated, I voted on the motion simply to not have the fee. And I think if we voted to not do the inspections, we would be voting to not comply with state law. And so I feel like even if we had voted for that, it would be null and void. So I guess my motion tonight is to reconsider the approval of the minutes, and subsequent to that, we may need a motion to reconsider that vote. I don't know how that's handled, but certainly we need to all be voting on the same thing.
Lincoln, that discussion had to do with charging fees for the inspection.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was certainly against, because this was not a good time to add $120 to someone on full fee. They hadn't even asked for an inspection.
Yes, sir.
I understand what you're saying about the state, but I don't agree with it.
Well, I understand. I voted with you on that part of the motion, but I believe the minutes reflected that the motion also said, "Don't do the inspections." And I don't believe we voted to do that, but it's, again, it's certainly ambiguous, and if you watch the tape.
But if she doesn't have the fees, she doesn't have the income to retain the people who are going to do the inspections. So if she doesn't get the fees, there is nobody there to do the inspection, so it's not getting done. The only difference is, are we going to be the ones that say that it's not going to be done due to our action, or do we cut the people out and then let her hang for not doing the inspections?
Yeah, and I think your comments speak to the issue of whether...
I mean, it's an unfunded mandate.
Well, I understand. But I mean, I think the first question that we have is just, are the minutes correct? What did, in fact, everybody vote on? I mean, I voted for what the chairman stated, which was to not approve the fee. And I guess the question for the rest of the members here is, what did you vote on? Maybe. You're the chairman, I don't know. I'm just bringing it up.
Well, I voted for not to approve that fee also.
Okay.
Now, what's meant, which you explained to us, that she cannot run the program without money to run it. I realized that when I voted.
I guess, I'm just asking for clarification of your motion precisely, so that we all know what we voted on. Because the chairman at the time voted, he restated your motion as there were, not to have the fee, and he didn't mention anything about providing the service. And that's what I voted on at 54 minutes and 16 seconds. But the minutes, and I can see how they were, it was difficult to determine, the minutes suggested some ambiguity there. I don't know how it's handled. I'm no parliamentary...
Your concern is that this board has taken action that conflicts with state law.
Well, I'm concerned about that. I don't think we did that, but certainly we need to make it clear, one way or another.
I thought our discussion was, we, I, because I voted to have the fee so that we could have the people to do the inspection as required by law. And I thought the other members of the board, that what y'all took was, it's an unfunded mandate, we've never had to do it before, we're not going to start now, so we're not going to collect the fees, knowing very well that that meant that she wouldn't have the inspectors, and then inspections wouldn't be done, which is okay. I can vote, I can vote. If you want to say, hey, we're just not going to obey the law, it's an unfunded mandate, we say no, then let's vote to not obey the law, not fund the positions, and let's not do the inspection.
Well, as a matter of parliamentary inquiry, strictly procedural matter, I'd like to ask if a commissioner makes a motion, and then there's some debate about the motion, and then the chairman restates the motion for a vote. What governs? Does the chairman's restatement of the motion, is that the final motion? Or is the original statement or statements by a commissioner, does that overrule the statement of the chairman?
I'm going to shoot from the hip here, but it would be my opinion that the restated motion would be what you were voting on.
Yeah, I think Robert's rules would even let us vote to uphold that ruling if we cared to.
I think that's right.
I certainly believe that what the chairman said, it was the motion, and therefore the minutes are incorrect. Do you believe what the chairman said is the motion? Mr. Johnson?
That's the motion I voted on. My big concern is, we're the only ones arguing about this. The state says you need to do it, but they're not making anybody do it. We're the only ones arguing about it, and if we don't shut up, the state might get wind of it and make us start doing it. I just wish we'd be quiet about it. But I'll vote on whatever you want to vote on, so it'll go away. I mean...
Just to let you know...
I'm trying to give you a hard time.
Just to let you know, though, I went, after the meeting, I went down to the health board meeting two days later and told them how I voted.
Yeah? They weren't real happy, honestly.
And they weren't happy with me. They typically aren't. And they argued me over how the vote went, and I argued that I voted for the, to not have the fee.
Right.
And they said, no, you voted to not do the service. And I said, no, I didn't. And then that's why I looked it up on the tape. So I like to tell the truth in the health board, even if it hurts a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
So I need clarification, so I need to know whether I need to apologize to the health board or not.
You need to do that anyway.
Well, yeah.
[laughing]
So...
Who do you want?
Mr. Chairman, I want a ruling on whether the chairman's statement was, in fact, the motion.
That's the motion I voted on.
Yeah.
Was not charged $140.
In that case, I...
I voted on both.
In that case, I have a motion to restate the minutes, as Moore now understands them.
Which, if I understand, what you're saying is that the motion would be to leave the fee rate the same and stop there.
Yes, sir.
That was the motion, to leave the fee rate the same and stop there.
There is no fee rate for that, for that.
The board doesn't establish a fee.
Or simply refer to the video and quote the chairman directly in the minutes.
Okay.
Just revise the minutes to quote the chairman directly according to the video.
And I have that, Commissioner Caddell, if you'd like for me to read it.
Oh, I think we're clear on it.
Okay. Let me go ahead and read it so we all understand.
Motion has been made to deny the Health Department request for approval of septic inspection fees of $100 effective April 1.
Okay.
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so, now, those minutes have been approved.
This is a motion to reconsider.
Okay, a motion to reconsider.
The approval of the minutes.
Okay, and then to stipulate this actual motion, perhaps?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's a motion, Mr. Caddell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Mashman, let's move on.
We ready to go on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. The next item is to approve the annual school bus lease between the Recreation Department and the Idaho State Full School System. Robert Woody, Recreation Director, will present that.
Good evening. This is an annual lease between Parks and Recreation Department and Idaho State Full School System, so that we can run our summer day camp program. We lease two buses during the summer in order to run this program. There's really not any changes from the previous years, other than the dates on the lease itself, and we're seeking approval for this lease.
Any questions? We have a motion to accept.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those both likewise.
Mr. Jackson will now present an item concerning the appointment of representatives to the 2010 Census Complete Count Committee.
Good evening. As you're aware, the census is approaching, and the regional representative, Census Bureau, has been going around to different jurisdictions, asking that we collaborate in promoting the census, to get the word out to the citizens, so they'll know what to expect and hopefully participate to a fuller extent. So what we're looking for... So what we're looking for tonight is some appointments to a complete count committee that would represent a cross-section of the county, the different areas, different communities, and just looking for your direction and guidance in that area, that issue.
Mr. Jackson, how soon do you need these appointments?
They would like them as soon as possible, but if you'd like to wait until the next meeting, I think that would be fine.
And according to your procedures, if you agree to this, unless you waive your procedures, then you would just announce the vacancies this evening, and then on the nineteenth, you would come with your nominations for that.
Okay. Do you not have any questions?
Let's just hurry up before Acorn shows up.
Okay. Okay, if there's no questions, do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then for the next meeting, we'll have you list the names, hopefully, I think it's at three per commissioner.
Right.
You need about fifteen people?
Sir.
Okay. You want a cross-section of a whole county, if I understand it right?
That's what they've asked for, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Next item is some amendments to the Family and Medical Leave Act policies of the county. And the Assistant HR Director Cynthia Eads will make this presentation.
Hi. The proposed revision to Article Six, Section Eight of the Aridale County Personnel Ordinance that you have before you tonight is necessary to bring the county's policies and procedures as they relate to the Family Medical Leave Act in compliance with recent federal amendments to the law. This proposed revision, it does no more than do what the law requires. It simply brings our ordinance into compliance with the federal guidelines. I did want to quickly highlight for you tonight the most significant change in the policy, and that deals with the addition of two types of job-protected leave that are available to employees now that weren't available until this policy was amended. They both are available to employees who have family members that are U.S. servicemen. The first type of leave is called military exigency leave, and the second type of leave is called military caregiver leave. The exigency leave allows an employee up to twelve weeks of job-protected leave for a family member who is either in the National Guard or in the reserves, and has been called to active duty. That leave is designed to allow them to do a variety of things. It may be, they might need to meet with an attorney to update a will, to do a power of attorney. They may need to make childcare arrangements. They may want to accompany their family member to the military base to see them off before they're deployed. But that's what that military exigency leave is for. And it, again, up to twelve weeks is allowed for that. The second type of leave is the military caregiver leave. And again, it is available to an employee who has a family member who is injured or becomes ill during the line of active duty. And it allows that employee up to twenty-six weeks of job-protected leave in order to take care of that family member. There are a couple other small changes to the policy. They go, relate from everything, from the updating of the definition of what a serious health condition is for us, the introduction of new forms from the Department of Labor, some new timeframes in which we have to respond to an employee who requests family medical leave. But again, the primary changes are the addition of the two types of leave, that military exigency leave and then the military caregiver leave. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Our policy simply runs what the federal government's policies...
Exactly. It does no more than what the federal amendment or the federal FMLA requires.
Okay. Any additional questions? We have a motion to accept.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the revisions as written.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Blumstein, the Finance Director, will present the next item, which is an application for public school building capital funds and lottery funds, and Budget Amendment Number Fifty-One. Ms. Blumstein.
Thank you. Actually, there's two applications included with the package, and they were prepared by Melissa Waik and her staff at Aridale Statesville Schools. The first is for eight-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-seven-hundred from the Public School Building Capital Fund. It was included in the two thousand eight projects that were approved and funded with certificates of participation for the construction of the new Cottle Creek Elementary School. There'll be no budget amendment required for that. It was included in the original project ordinance. The second is a withdrawal from the lottery proceeds that have been allocated for Aridale Statesville Schools. We originally budgeted, in this year's budget, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of Public School Building Capital Fund. We would like to change that and use lottery proceeds instead, because they do not require a local match. We're also asking for two-hundred-seventy-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars more than originally budgeted that will be appropriated to Aridale Statesville Schools to help them with some of their costs that they've already incurred towards the Phase Three projects. Now, if you go on site or online to Department of Public Instruction, they have some information about lottery proceeds and ADM capital funds, which says that these funds are all frozen statewide. We have talked with Representatives of DPI and also NCACC, and they have assured us that these will be approved if we get them in this week. So the school board approved them last night, and Ms. Moore has copies that have been signed by the school board chair. If you have any questions specifically about the projects that were included in this year's general fund, the annual capital improvements, we call them, Kenny Miller's here, and I'm sure he could answer your questions.
You did say if we get this in this week, if they get turned in, then they're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Phelps with DPI has assured us that he will approve these. I mean, the money's there, it's sitting in our name. But apparently, unless you have plans, specifications, a project's been bid, they're not approving anything right now, or they're not letting them, not letting the money go.
Then, any questions from Ms. Blumstein? We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blumstein.
Mr. Jackson is going to present the item concerning the substation agreement with the Troutman Fire and Rescue.
In July two thousand eight, Troutman Fire Rescue and Aridale County EMS came before the board to get approval for an agreement to co-locate an EMS unit in a proposed Troutman Fire Substation. Troutman Fire Rescue, representatives are here tonight. They've let us know that they're ready to move forward with construction bids, and they would like to just reconfirm, and EMS would like to reconfirm, that it's appropriate to move ahead with planning for an EMS unit to be stationed in this future fire facility in the Troutman area. This will be off Perth Road. It's a pretty strategic location for EMS, because it gives them good access to Highway one-fifty and the western corner down there, that part of the county. It's also less expensive than going out and buying land outright and building a standalone EMS base. So that was one of the primary reasons that we wanted to enter into this venture.
Any questions, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Jackson, the thirty-six thousand dollars that is in the FY-ten budget, that just covers the rental and some furnishings for it. Does not include any personnel or rolling equipment for that site. What's the plans for that?
That's correct. The way it stands right now, EMS would take existing staff, existing equipment, and just spread out, basically. David Clor, I believe, is here. If you have some comments you'd like to add to that.
Good afternoon. How you doing? We can use some of the existing staff, maybe shift our, Mooresville Supervisor around to that area to actually give some initial coverage and cut down on actual, and new manpower costs for this upcoming budget year, if approved by them, if you want to continue to go with it. We can, we have existing trucks, we, excuse me, we have enough equipment that we can, you know, supply those trucks and keep those trucks up and running and man that area. Now, the supervisor responsibility is to call them out from time to time to assist other crews and stuff. So it'd be kind of like our Lake Norman base now, where they get rotated out, depending on the severity of cause, and for mutual aid assistance with other trucks. But we can move them down, and they can actually work out of that area without any additional personnel at this time.
It'd be a quick response vehicle?
Yes, it would be a quick response vehicle.
How long do you think you can keep that up, Mr. Clor, before you have to increase your staff or equipment?
In the Mooresville area, probably not long. There's, that area's growing rapidly, as we all know, and...
What about in regard to this request?
The supervisors pretty much can stay there as long as we need them to. But that unit's eventually going to have to be upgraded, or a third Mooresville unit's going to have to be added in the near future. I would say within the next three to five years, without a doubt. And that, again, depends on the growth in that area and how fast it comes.
Any additional questions with Clor? Not, we have a motion to approve?
Make the mo, Mr. Chairman, I move that we reconfirm the approval of the July two thousand eight agreement between Aridale County and the Troutman Fire and Rescue Squad to locate an EMS substation and propose Troutman Fire and Rescue Substation.
Okay, you heard the motion. Any questions regarding the motion?
Mr. Mashburn, if I understand this right, we just obligated thirty-six thousand dollars in next year's budget?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we, and we also...
Were you comfortable with this?
And you also are authorizing the director to shift from one station to the other adequate personnel to effect that change. And his immediate plan is to use the assistant shift supervisor, which is stationed in Mooresville, to effect that change, at least in the foreseeable future, with the understanding that at some point in time, the workload in Mooresville is going to be probably so great that we have to pull that back, and they would have to staff the Troutman. And that's the reason that we've brought it back to you, to not, so that you would understand. You've already agreed one time that we would do this, but this, that we would, that we would go in and lease this space. But that's when we had more money, and we anticipated that we would probably put a unit there and staff it. There is, there are no funds to staff a unit now.
But you feel comfortable with the thirty-six thousand dollar request? That's my question.
That will cover the expenses for next year. That is correct, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm in agreement with that. Mr. Clor, you're going to have to make do with the folks and equipment you got till things get better.
Yes, sir, we understand.
We understand that going in. Okay.
Any additional questions? If not, we entertain a motion?
Motion's been made.
Okay. All in favor of the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Item K is approval of the April twenty-first minutes.
Motion to accept the minute.
Scott, you do it.
I better make this motion. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cato. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ron Smith, the Director of Planning, will present the next item, which is an addition to the agenda concerning erosion and sedimentation control expansion services. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to add this to the agenda. Back in two thousand and six, the county went into the erosion and sedimentation control business and took this over from the state. We have been active for about two years now. In July one, will be two years up and running, and learned a lot, and have really become pretty much, pretty much experts at the program. In the beginning, one of the ideas was to eventually look into the possibility of taking over the municipalities. So over the last five months or so, our department has been examining just that. And over that course of time, we have come forward with approvals from both Troutman and Statesville. Both of their elected boards have passed resolutions to request the county take over erosion and sedimentation control duties from NC Deaner. We have been talking with the town of Mooresville as well, but under the deadline that we have looming, which I'll get into in a minute, we haven't been able to put all of that together. From this point, if you choose to adopt the resolution that I've submitted to you, we'll take the three resolutions, ours, Troutman's, and Statesville's, to the SEC, which is the Sedimentation and Erosion Control Commission. We have a deadline, they meet May twenty-first, this month. And we have a deadline of this week to actually get this on their agenda. So that was one of the reasons I wanted to add this to, to the agenda. If we don't get Troutman and Statesville on the agenda for the May twenty-first meeting, then we're pushed back to August. And under the circumstances, I would much rather know if Troutman and Statesville are a go for future planning purposes and budgeting purposes sooner rather than later, which the later being August at the earliest. So I've submitted a resolution for your consideration, and I would be glad to answer any more questions that you have.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ron, when we, when we passed this ordinance for the county, we didn't pass a bunch of new regulations or requirements. It was basically, it was just an agreement that the county would enforce the state rules, because the state basically wasn't enforcing soil erosion and sediment runoff going into the lake. So, so basically, we had to take it over because the state wasn't doing their job, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So there are no, we don't have any rules that the state doesn't have, correct?
Well, we have...
As far as setbacks and all that kind of stuff?
We have one difference that I am aware of, and basically, in the watersheds, in the critical area, in the protected area of the Lake Norman watersheds, we, our provisions apply to half-acre lots, whereas the state's is one-acre lots.
Okay.
So, you know, it's really not that big of a difference.
All right. If, I don't understand, why, why, if it was good for the county to do, Statesville's signed on, Troutman has signed on, what's the holdup with Mooresville? They're the ones who reap probably the greatest benefit of the lake and have the most development in the watershed that affects the lake. What's, what's the holdup? Why would they not want to take this measure to basically protect the water quality of Lake Norman?
Well, that's a very good question. I've worked probably more with Mooresville to this point in trying to clarify and appease some of their questions at the staff level. You know, and we've gotten the endorsement from the staff. So the only thing that I've heard negative on this is that there is some concern about the turnaround time for plans review, which I believe that they may be looking at our inspections department and not necessarily this program.
Turnaround time for plans review, we got inspectors on short work weeks because they don't have enough work. I mean, is this really a problem, that we can't get plans turned around?
I firmly believe that that is, that is not a problem. I agree with you. I work in the same building with those gentlemen.
But that's being offered as the reason why?
Well, that's the only reason I've heard. That's the only reason that I have heard at this point.
Mr., may I, may I interject something here, just for, for a point of clarification? I do have a meeting on the eighth, May the eighth, with the city manager and some of the staff there. My understanding, and we do have Commissioner Rader here tonight, this has never actually made it to the commissioners yet. It's been held at the manager's level, and the manager, which is, you know, the manager's new and is not familiar with our processes here, and I think just needs some further clarification.
Okay.
I do have a meeting set up with him on the eighth.
To talk about this?
To talk about this.
All right.
That's correct.
No more questions?
I will add that if you do choose to adopt this resolution, I would recommend that we make the effective date July first. That'll give us ample amount of time to transition the program, work with the state, and generally start with a clean slate as much as... start with a clean slate as much as possible.
Any additional question, Mr. Mayor? Not, have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any questions, go ahead and motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Thank you.
Those are the administrative matters, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commission. Safety Plan Board, ETJ, one appointment. Animal Gribers Committee, one appointment. National Home Advisory Committee, one appointment. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, three appointments. Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control, Finance Authority, two appointments. Fairgrounds Captain Improvement Committee, nine appointments. Okay, we start from the beginning?
Mr. Chairman, those are actual appointments, those are not announcements.
Okay, announcement, the only one we had was...
No.
The control, is that right, control?
Yeah, the...
But it had...
The Census Committee.
Census. Well, we had one, one announcement, right?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll start back over, we'll go through the appointments first. Safety Plan Board, ETJ, one appointment. Anyone? Motion to table?
I, I've got somebody, and I'll offer them, I think, in two weeks. We just need to clarify their qualification.
Okay.
Okay. Animal Gribers Committee, one appointment. Anyone?
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to table? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. National Home Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Motion to table?
Motion to table? All in favor, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, three appointments.
Motion to table?
Motion to table? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control, Finance Authority, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, nominate Steve Robinson and Kevin Donaldson.
Okay, Steve Robinson, anyone else have any appointments? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fairgrounds Captain Improvement Committee, nine appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jane Hall as a county citizen appointment.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, here, everyone? Mr. Johnson?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would nominate, under, under county citizens, Mr. Steve Cash from the Ag Community, Ms. Barbara of Blackwelder, and Mr. Sam Dobson. And I don't guess it's too tacky to nominate myself, since I'm on the Fairgrounds Committee, so I'd nominate myself.
Okay.
Mr. Harvey Pons and Mr. Jim Head will represent the Kiwanis Club, and Mr. Joel Mashburn and Mr. Ken Vaughn will serve in ex officio capacity.
Mr. Johnson, I'd like a clarification on the ex officio capacity. That will be a non-voting capacity, correct?
Non-voting, yeah. Position of recommendation.
Okay. We'll miss another couple, Mr. Johnson?
Pardon?
Six, we had Harvey Pons, he was the one after Harvey. Jim Head?
Jim Head.
Okay. Ms. Moore, you count nine?
It was my intent that the, Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Mashburn would comprise the nine in ex officio capacity. That's what, that's what I was missing, too.
Okay. You've heard the motion? All in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have any unfinished business? New business?
Mr. Chairman, I sort of, had, uh, failed to bring a note. Don't show up at the airport on the 8th, that's the day we do the, the mock demonstration out there, so if you show up on the 8th, it's not going to be there, it'll be the following week.
Okay.
If anybody'd like to come out and give me a call, and I'll put you back, I've already got you on there.
Okay. County Manager's Report?
Just a reminder that this is National County Government Week. We started activities on Monday evening at the library, which was a program on recycling that was hosted by the Solid Waste Department. Diane Knox did a, a very fine job with that. Today, there was a program in the Shepherd School. I don't know how that went, but I'm assuming it went well. Ron Smith and Ken Vaughn and David Lambert were the committee that put the program together. Tomorrow, we will, tomorrow night here, is it here? From 7 until 9 will be the presentation of the 2030 Horizon Plan, and of course, that's open to the public, and we hope, and a, a lot of people will be here for that. Thursday, from 7 until 8 will be the services of the Cooperative Extension Program, and then Friday, there is no program, and Saturday, we will have a tour of the Demonstration Garden at the Agricultural Resource Center, and then a tour of the methane plant at the solid waste facility. Both of those are from 9 to 11. Both of them are well worth the, the time to take that. Ron, you have a comment?
David Lambert would kill me if he, if I didn't tell you that you need to call first if, if you want to go visit the methane plant, so I've failed to do that in the past.
Don't smoke.
So, I, I would just call, and I, and I apologize for not having the number, but the solid waste facility, and talk to David about scheduling that.
Okay. That's all.
That's all.
Okay, we have a closed session, so...
The motion for adjournment? The move? The move? All right.[1321.32]